Have your attention please. I'd like to bring the Wilmington City Council Regular Meeting, December 15th, to order. May we have roll call, please?
Jonathan McKay.
Here.
Michael Snar.
Here.
Bill Lierman.
Here.
Bob Osborne.
Here.
Michael Albright.
Nick Evelyn.
Here.
Matt Perkey.
Here.
We have one Abbot and Councilmember. What is your pleasure?
Move that be excused?
Second motion, second to excuse the Abbot and Councilmember all in favor, signify the same aye.
Aye.
May it be opposed? The Abbot and Councilmember is excused. Would you now stand and join me in the pledge of allegiance?
The pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please join me in a brief moment's time. Just a little housekeeping. If you plan to speak tonight, we've changed our procedure just a little bit, upgraded our policies, and there is a signup sheet over on this end of the table over this side, and you can sign up in time prior to the open part of council, but we're allowed anyone from the audience to speak. And then we'll talk about other policy changes when we get ready to go into that area. All right, you have before you the agenda, or is your pleasure?
I need to make a change to Judiciary Section. Item B tonight was Resolution 2251. We need to remove that from the agenda.
Motion, so can motion to strike that from the agenda and approve as amended? Second. Motion, second to strike an item from the agenda, approve the amended agenda, all in favor, signify the same aye.
Aye.
May it be opposed? Amended agenda is approved. Also, you have before you the regular council meeting minutes for December 1st. What is your pleasure?
Move to be accepted as presented?
Second.
Motion, second to accept the December 1st regular council meeting minutes, all in favor, signify the same aye.
Aye.
May it be opposed? Meeting minutes are accepted. That's all I have. Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. President. A couple things to announce. Jeff Honk, our Water Department, he's going to be retiring after 42 years of service. Congratulations to Jeff, and I hope he enjoys his retirement. They're going to have a little party for him, 12:30, from 12 to noon at the Water Plant. My experience at the Water Plant is they're pretty good cooks. So if you're looking for someplace to have lunch at, they stop in. Everybody is welcome. I can't believe I'm finally going to announce that the South Street signals are moving, and they're taking down the old poles, and we have most of the concrete fixed. There are still a few minor repairs to take care of, but weather cooperating, we hope to get it wrapped up by the first of the year, if not, we'll wrap it up in a spring.
I know, they were poured in concrete today.
Yeah, they sure were.
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Mayor?
Jeff's party is held on Rockback Avenue at the Safety Center.
That's even better.
Yep.
For your room.
More room. I just wanted, I didn't want him to show up at the Water Plant.
All right, thank you.
Sure.
Now, I have great pleasure to swear on a new firefighter.
Cameron Young, would you like to come forward? And Cameron, if you've got anybody that you would like to join you?
How long have I said that?
Oh, I still have to use the microphone.
You introduced your mom and dad.
This is my mom, Stacy, and my stepdad, Travis.
Welcome.
Cameron?
Raise your right hand and repeat after me. I, Cameron Young.
I, Cameron Young.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the State of Ohio.
The Constitution of the State of Ohio.
And the ordinances of the City of Wilmington, Ohio.
And the ordinances of the City of Wilmington, Ohio.
And that I will faithfully.
And that I will faithfully.
And impartially.
And impartially.
Discharge and perform all duties.
Discharge and perform all duties.
And combat upon me.
Combat upon me.
As a firefighter, paramedic.
As a firefighter, paramedic.
With the Fire Department for the City of Wilmington, Ohio.
With the Fire Department for the City of Wilmington, Ohio.
To the best of my ability and understanding.
To the best of my ability and understanding.
This I do as I shall answer unto God.
This I do as I shall answer unto God.
Congratulations.
I don't know. Cameron, let's meet this.
Now you're going to help. It's going to be mom or dad.
Smart boy.
Great, great.
I think I'd be a lot if I did.
That's it, Mr. President? Congratulations, everyone, and family. Auditor Vance, do you have anything to address tonight?
Nothing at this moment.
Thank you. Safety Service Director, Mr. Schottig.
Nothing at this moment, no legislation, Mr. President.
Thank you. All right, under Council reports, City Revitalization Committee, Mr. McKay.
No report, Mr. President.
Thank you. City Services Committee, Mr. Ebel.
The City Services Committee met last week, and we were asked to consider two different ideas. First one dealing with the speed limit on Main Street, particularly on, in the area from Wayne Avenue to Josephine Street down into downtown. We had a fairly lengthy review from Paul Kugue, who's the city engineer, and it was the feeling of the committee that the speed limit should remain where it is, 35 miles an hour. To change it and reduce it would require approval from ODOT, and a great deal of study went into what the speeds actually are out there. Now, one thing that we did find was that there's only one speed limit sign coming off of Wayne Avenue, it's a right-hand side, it's an old sign, it's up pretty high, and then there's no more speed limit signs at all between there and in front of where Long's Pharmacy and Ziegler's are downtown, and the speed limit then drops back to 25 miles an hour. So the thought was by the committee that maybe the recommendation to add additional speed limit signs in that area, coupled with some additional enforcement by the Police Department, maybe some more frequent speed control after the Police Department, and that probably is about the best we should do as of right now. I did have copies run of the report, and I think you will see that it's quite in depth. And so it was a, we thought of the committee to make those recommendations. In addition, then, we also talked about the handicapped parking or lack thereof right at the center of the courthouse on Main Street, I'm sorry, on South Street, at the main entrance to the courthouse. If you get down there right now, there are only handicapped parking places at each end of the block. Previously, prior to the renovations, there was a handicapped parking area right there, so it made it more accessible for people in wheelchairs and walkers to go up right there and get into the courthouse. The committee and the administration discussed this to some length along with the engineer, and it was feeling, the feeling that we can eliminate one of the handicapped parking places at the corner and move it down back to the center entranceway of the courthouse. That, of course, would require some money. The administration there is going to look into that and see what they think that might cost us to do. But it was a feeling that it was a matter of safety, a matter of convenience for handicapped people, that that really should take place. The other thing that would have to take place is commissioners would have to look at that and give us their blessing. I did have a discussion with Brenda Woods, Captain Lisa Woods, and she said that they would be all in favor of that, that they really hated to lose that parking place originally. And so they'd like to, she would like to have it back, and she's going to discuss it with her fellow commissioners. But her feelings, I think, would probably be the right thing to do. So that's where we stand with that, no legislation with that, and basically this was a response to citizens' concerns, citizens' concern about the speed on Main Street, and also the handicapped parking. And I think Jonathan, you want to add anything to that?
No, I think you did a fine job, Council.
Thank you. Bill, anything to add?
I would like to ask, even though there was a handicap parking spot there before, there were still curbs in the way. So when we do that additional space, it'll actually have a ramp. So like you said, for a wheelchair and a walker, they'll have to get up over that, over the curb, and that'll be a big improvement for people that need, need that type of services.
One other thing that came up is kind of interesting. Last year, when we had one of the biggest snows, the snow was pushed to between the street and the sidewalk right there. The courthouse people moved their snow toward the street, the street people moved their snow toward the courthouse, and consequently, there was a berm up to three feet high that people had to climb over. So hopefully, if we put a ramp in there, then maybe we can entice the courthouse people to clean that off, and make it a little bit easier. That's all, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Ebel. Finance Committee, I believe that's Mr. Snar, tonight?
Yes, it is. We've got four things to consider. First one is Ordinance 2263, supplemental appropriations. And Auditor Vance, we're going to walk us through this a little bit.
You should have a new one at your place that only has one item on it. I'll wait until you all shuffle through there and find it. So the only thing we have, the one supplemental we have received is $13,800 to go into the line to transfer to Airborne Road, the Airborne Road Project. This is the last, as of today, the last little piece we need to bring us into balance with the Airborne Road Project. We did receive our grant match for what we have requested today from the court authorities, and we are very appreciative that they got their money, that they sent it to us, brought it and delivered it to us this evening. So we're very appreciative of that, but that's all this is, is just this one, as of today, little piece that's left for general financial obligation for the Airborne Road Project.
Do I have questions on that? If there are any questions, I move to give first reading of Ordinance 2263 by title only.
Second. Motion by Snar, second by Osborne, first reading Ordinance 2263. All in favor, signify the same aye.
Aye.
May it be opposed? First reading, please.
In ordinance making supplemental appropriations as amended.
I move to suspend the rules and regulations and give Ordinance 2263 second, third reading by title only.
Second. Motion, second for suspension of rules, roll call, please.
McKay.
Yes.
Snar.
Yes.
Lierman.
Yes.
Osborne.
Yes.
Evelyn.
Yes.
Perkey.
Yes.
Motion carries, second, third reading, please.
In ordinance making supplemental appropriations as amended.
I move to pass Ordinance 2263.
Second. Motion, second for passage, roll call, please.
Snar.
Yes.
Lierman.
Yes.
Osborne.
Yes.
Evelyn.
Yes.
Perkey.
Yes.
McKay.
Yes.
Thank you. Ordinance 2263 passes.
Great, thank you. Next, we have Ordinance 2264. These are, in Auditor Vance's words, housekeeping things that always happen at the end of the year, and you can see there are a lot of them. Nothing really big financially, but if anyone has questions or concerns, yep.
Just one question on item, yeah, which is, tax and federal interest, miscellaneous expenses, some $14,500. When I see that number that big, miscellaneous and incidental, can somebody maybe?
We discussed this in finance, that auditor, Os, or auditor, that's me. Osborne asked that question during finance, so it's another big question. This is a line item that typically has been used for a lot of repairs and parts and things like that. During the original budget process last year, we did not have a superintendent who prepared this budget, so as Jessica has come in, as we have found along the way this year, we've had to do a lot of supplemental transfers to get things back in line with what she really needs to have in the right places when she puts her requests in for federal and state reimbursements. And this is one of the lines that typically had a lot of those in. I think the previous year had a large amount of money in it. The original budget, I believe, had only $5,000 at the beginning of the year. So this has been, this line has been a struggle for her, and has to find through this, so this just covers what she had to spend out there here through the two years.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Other questions, comments, concerns? Great, thank you. If not, I move to give first reading of Ordinance 2264 by title only.
Second. Motion by Snar, second by McKay, first reading Ordinance 2264. All in favor, signify the same aye.
Aye.
May it be opposed? First reading, please.
In ordinance making miscellaneous transfers.
Thank you. I move to suspend the rules and regulations, give Ordinance 2264 second, third reading by title only.
Second. Motion, second to suspend the rules, roll call, please.
Lierman.
Yes.
Osborne.
Yes.
Evelyn.
Yes.
Perkey.
Yes.
McKay.
Yes.
Snar.
Yes.
Motion carries, may we have second, third reading?
In ordinance making miscellaneous transfers.
I move to pass Ordinance 2264.
Second. Motion, second for passage, roll call, please.
Osborne.
Yes.
Evelyn.
Yes.
Perkey.
Yes.
McKay.
Yes.
Snar.
Yes.
Lierman.
Yes.
Ordinance 2264 passes.
Right, thank you. We have third or four. This is making appropriations for current expenses, and one we did not discuss in committee.
This is the budget. This is the budget. We looked at it, we read it twice, so this will be the third reading. This is the budget. Tell us, anybody?
There were no changes from our last reading, but I, I mean, I didn't go through every single one, but I didn't see anything glaringly different from our list.
Questions? All right, great. I move to give first reading only of Ordinance 2268.
Third.
Sorry, third reading of 2260.
Second. Motion, second for third reading, Ordinance 2260, the budget, roll call, please.
Evelyn.
Yes.
Perkey.
Yes.
McKay.
Yes.
Snar.
Yes.
Lierman.
Yes.
Osborne.
Yes.
Motion carries, may we have third reading, please?
In ordinance making appropriations for current expenses and other expenses and other expenditures, and creating necessary funds for set appropriations of the City of Wilmington, Ohio during the fiscal year ending December 31st, 2023, as amended.
I make the motion to pass Ordinance 2260, as read.
Second. Motion, second by Perkey for passage, Ordinance 2260, roll call, please.
Perkey.
Yes.
McKay.
Yes.
Snar.
Yes.
Lierman.
Yes.
Osborne.
Yes.
Evelyn.
Yes.
Great, last one.
Ordinance 2260 passes.
Sorry, thank you. Three readings of Resolution 2250, and this is making balancing transactions.
We discussed this previously, and part of this is the same as what your budget ordinance reads very similarly to the budget ordinance. Since this is the 15th day of the summer, and we've got 16 more days left in this year, we feel that that big long list that you passed for the miscellaneous transfers, we think that's it, but we don't know that that's it because there are 16 more days. And for you to pass this resolution gives us the authorization to go ahead and do those inter-fund transfers, which is just like what you've done. You can see all that housekeeping. That's just a lot of housekeeping. So that allows us to go ahead with that housekeeping, and then one section also does give us the opportunity that if there is a supplemental, has a very last resort that we had to do because otherwise, we'll all be back before December 31st to have a council meeting for you to pass a supplemental. So we, years ago, you should come in on New Year's Eve at 7:00 a.m. in the morning to pass these transfers and supplementals, and I don't think that's anything anybody wants to do. But this, there will be a listing for you, it reads that way, that there will be a listing for you in January of what, if, any transfers we have. I, my fingers are crossed that we don't have to do any, but this just gives us that flexibility to make those things happen and not have to come back and have a special meeting. And this is just for the, this resolution is just for the remainder of this calendar, the next 16 months.
I prefer it to a quick meeting on New Year's Eve.
Agreed, agreed. Okay. I move to give first reading only of Resolution 2250 by title only.
Second. Motion by Snar, second by Osborne, for first reading Resolution 2250. All in favor, signify the same aye.
Aye.
May it be opposed? First reading, please.
A resolution authorizing the city auditor to make balancing transactions through the end of FY 2022 in the form of intra-fund transfers and/or supplemental appropriations, provided for the reporting of said transfers and supplementals, and declaring an emergency.
I move to suspend the rules and regulations, give Resolution 2250 second, third reading by title only.
Second. Motion, second by Osborne for suspension of rules for Resolution 2250. Roll call, please.
McKay.
Yes.
Snar.
Yes.
Lierman.
Yes.
Osborne.
Yes.
Evelyn.
Yes.
Perkey.
Yes.
Motion carries, may we have second, third reading, please?
A resolution authorizing the city auditor to make balancing transactions through the end of FY 2022 in the form of intra-fund transfers and/or supplemental appropriations, provided for the reporting of said transfers and supplementals, and declaring an emergency.
I move to pass Ordinance 2250.
Second. Motion, second for passage, Resolution 2250, roll call, please.
Snar.
Yes.
Lierman.
Yes.
Osborne.
Yes.
Evelyn.
Yes.
Perkey.
Yes.
McKay.
Yes.
I'm going to have Mr. President, sorry.
Thank you. Resolution 2250 passes. You're a pretty big bird, you get down here. Thank you. Thank you, Council. All right. Judiciary Committee, Mr. Perkey.
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. We do have one piece of legislation tonight, and we're just going to do a first reading on it, so you can give community time to look it over and discuss if needed, bring up in future meetings. But we have a request to grant an access easement in the South Wind subdivision down the end of the corner where Morris and South Wind intersect. We went through this in committee this evening, but there's a property owner who has property adjacent that wants to build a house there, and they'll need to have an access easement or a driveway to get through a second parcel that's owned by their family and then onto their own parcel. So this is at the end of a street, so there could be a situation someday where the city needed to, or more street or whatever, this Eva could be revoked at that point. So the property owner is where they'll pay for all the improvements, and if there were a need to ever remove the driveway to extend the street, they'd be, might each of them for that as well. So I think there are maps. I don't know, Brian, did you bring any maps today?
I did not bring any maps.
So, I mean, if you're familiar with the neighborhood, it's a street with a little side street there next back to it, so you can see kind of where, where it's standing there is the, is the point where they'll have access through that little property line there and then build a driveway back to the property, they want to build the house. Are there questions about it? We're just doing a first reading tonight, and then people can have time to ask questions later, so. Okay, seeing none, I'll move for the first reading of Ordinance 2265 by title only.
Second. Motion by Perkey, second by McKay, first reading, Ordinance 2265, all in favor, signify the same aye.
Aye.
May it be opposed? First reading, please.
In ordinance authorizing the granting of access easement in the South Wind subdivision.
We'll do our next reading at the first, first meeting of the new year.
Just want to do the second reading next.
That's all I have, Mr. President?
Public Works Enterprise Committee, Mr. Snar. No report, Mr. President. Thank you. You do have before you, under reports to council, the income tax report for November, and also the auditor report for November. Motion, please. They being accepted as presented? Second. Motion, second by Lierman, motion by McKay for approval of the reports as presented, all in favor, signify the same aye.
Aye.
May it be opposed? Reports are accepted. Now coming to the portion of the meeting that's open to the public, and you gentlemen, we're not here earlier, but you need to know if you wish to speak tonight, you have to sign up, and we can give you a signup sheet, so you need to do that as quickly as you can. Also, there are some things that we came up with to kind of move things along a little faster, I think, and I'll just kind of highlight these, and they're available for you to look at as well, some policy changes. People who want to speak to council or ask to sign in prior or during the meeting, but before the public comments period begins, when signing in, please include a name of address, email, and discussion topic. All speakers must present from the podium, which is in the center of the room here. Each speaker is limited. Each speaker is limited to three minutes, and our clerk will keep track of that for us. President, council, or clerk will notify the speaker when the three minutes are up. Each speaker is permitted to sign up to speak once during each meeting. If more than one person wants to speak about the same subject, they're encouraged to provide their comments. So if they choose not to do this, each person is still entitled to three minutes. The public comments section is for a citizen to share information, not to engage council or anyone else in conversations. The three minutes is strictly for the speaker to share their thoughts. If a speaker's content is deemed inappropriate, in other words demeaning to others, includes profanity, et cetera, the president and council may terminate the person for any time immediately. If a speaker is asking for comments from council or staff, this requested feedback will be provided following the meeting, usually in writing. And those attending a meeting should not interrupt council business. Comments should be made during the public comments section only. So with that having been said, did we have some votes that are signed up to speak tonight?
Where's the signup sheet?
Can we need the signup sheet?
Yeah, I'm just waiting for the finish up.
When the three minutes is up, you will hear a name or something, and...
Hopefully, if my kind of works. Yeah. If not, I'll go ding.
Obviously, you don't have to stop in mid-sentence, but just, you know, complete your thoughts at that point.
Did everyone get an opportunity to put their name on the list?
All right, who do we have first?
First up, we have Darryl Petrie, five by one force, came about three fifty, hard still.
Yeah, he'll just address from there, Darryl, thank you.
So I can't, I can't ask you a question?
Oh, you certainly can, but we won't be responding other than in writing.
Okay, I'll let you write. I saw in the council video, my last laptop, you, the three of you in this meeting in this place was in agreement that I'd be banned for future meetings. And, you know, I didn't feel what I did was enough to give me banned permanently from meetings. I willingly walked out, and as I was walking out the door, Mr. Shidder made a comment to me.
I will, I will respond to that. That was inappropriate, we cannot do that.
Okay, it's inappropriate that we're not getting answers as well. But three of you agreed that my constitutional rights would be violated. And I, you know, I was just wanting to know on your own time, if you guys can explain how you, being in agreement that my constitutional rights would be violated would be a good idea. And I'd like that on your time, because that's, you should address that. Okay. Mr. Mayor, a while back, I submitted information to you regarding the evidence I gave to council. I'm just curious, did you submit that evidence to council regarding Mr. Nature? That's what I thought. Mr. Mayor, I don't really need you to answer this question, but there's a copy of a two-hundred-and-fifteen-thousand-dollar sex payout that was paid out.
We'd like for you to address council. Just address council, not the audience.
Well, the public deserves to know. This is Mr. Stanford's signature on this paper, and it is for two-hundred-and-fifteen-thousand dollars to the victim, right here. Right there, Mr. Stanford's name. I'm curious, is council was aware, and the auditor was aware, where this two-hundred-and-fifteen-grand came from, and what account that came out of? I mean, you put yourself in a really good position not just being able to not answer questions, so I love the way you altered this. Mr. Mayor, you haven't responded back in, and you set it up to where you don't have to respond ever now. Congratulations. You manipulated a system and found a loophole. From what I saw, the sex scandal was sealed, the records were sealed on occasion. We were wondering which judge signed and sealed that, because I was looking at the credentials to seal these records, and they didn't mean it, so it must have been illegally sealed, from, from what I could see. We're kind of, everybody's going to be curious of how that happened. Mr. Shidder, you told us that you were aware of everything, that you saw everything, all the information, you admitted to me and Tony, and you haven't done nothing to it, you haven't even responded to it. I mean, you're, you're responsible for public safety, and we got people out there who we can prove killed people, patrol on our streets with deadly weapons and lethal force. That, that's public safety risk number one, and it should be a priority of everybody in this room. Mr. Hamilton of the newspaper, Aaron Edison, you're reporting, you ignore my presence in these, in these meetings.
Yes, what's your point of work?
Well, here's, here's this for you, Mr., there's the nature follow-up, here's the, what, what she said in court, and here's the sex scandal information, all for you, Mr. Newspaper. Here's the nature evidence, too. It's all, it proves murder.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Next.
Just a moment, court, all right?
Let me get set up again. Greg Pittster, one sixteen, Thomas Lane, got it. Are you ready?
Yes.
Yes, sir.
Okay, chief, you had mentioned transparency a few times regarding my daughter's case, but how many times have you replied? Several emails that I, that you and I have been tagged regarding my daughter's case. Zero. Has been confirmed that they were sent to your correct email address, and they're a month ago, so why have you not responded to my emails? Please answer. Okay. How many times have you tried to contact me outside these council meetings, the answer is none? This is not what transparency looks like. Chief, you had a tailbone to the letter from the BCI for a month, and never even told me, never even told me. I had to find out through a third party, why is that? Why, why would you not tell me nothing? It's my daughter, they're investigating, you never told me a thing. Chief, in the last name, you stated that you forwarded everything to BCI so the third party could investigate, so the things would have been transparent for me, yet no one from BCI has ever contacted me about anything, not once, nothing. I mean, if you're going, if you're going investigation, why am I, I'm her father, I should be the first one. Yet no one reads every, to date, nothing is transparent, and BCI has already defined for reopening cases, case, or because she craves, is what that evidence is saying, for BCI, which I think happened. You've read my book. You know where it's in it. Did you forward the new information, have you legally destroyed evidence to BCI? Did you forward that?
I will talk to you after.
Well, I want you to tell everybody here, I want everybody here. I'm not talking, I want everybody here to help, to hear what you've got to say. And if you're not going to say it in front of everybody, then you don't need to be chief.
We, we can ask you to.
Well, all I want him to do is tell you guys. I want everybody to hear what he has to say. That's all I'm asking.
Our new policy is, he really can't answer you right now.
Did you alter your policy because of us?
And you are not to speak out of the audience.
It's all right, I can. You altered it for us, I'm leaving.
Okay.
You guys altered it, your favorite's disgusting.
People have taken the ability to reopen my daughter's case, reopen, are standing in this room right now. And for some odd reason, those people keep choosing not to reopen my daughter's case, even though it is known that key evidence was destroyed, even though three thousand people signed a petition to reopen my case. Please tell me, chief, Mr. Shidder, and mayor, you must have a good reason to keep my daughter's past investigation closed, so please, what single good reason do you have to keep my daughter's case closed? Chief, mayor, public director. Mr. Shidder, do you have anything?
Your, your time is up, sir. Thank you. You can watch the clock here and, and see how much time's left, if that's helpful for you. Do we have someone else?
Uh, yes, we have, uh, Tony Thomas, I think, is that right? Two oh four Fisher State.
Thank you.
Are you ready?
I am.
Okay.
I have two topics. One that I just need communities to know about, concerns children. I have a podcast, and it was brought to my attention that, that a young lady whose, whose children were removed due to an out-of-state expert giving psychological input into, injecting psychological input into our courts, henceforth. Her, her, her case taking a complete dive, of where she was gone. This person was, was illegally giving input because she was not licensed in this state of life. I don't know whose job it is to, to, to find out, I don't know if it's the courts, I don't know if it's the, the attorneys. A local attorney brought this person here after going to Green County and bringing another case back here and using it as a playbook. But if you look up the name Linda Goffey, you'll see this woman's number science is in the DSM five anywhere, anywhere. However, she's injecting this into our community, our children, and it's interfering and interrupting with, with the families. And from what I've read, I got to tell you, I've got, I've got an education within that field, it's disgusting. It's absolutely positively disgusting, and, and I don't know if it's the judges, I don't know if it's the CPS, I don't know, I don't know whose job it is. But to allow someone like this, I mean, I call her a voodoo doctor, and if, and if you look in, if you just, if you just look at the lady's name, and, and you'll see. So there's that. My second topic is, how do we, or how do we have an officer that's now seven months deep into our pockets, not working, sitting at home and eating Cheetos? Mr. Shot Baker, how, how is he still getting paid, sitting at home? And, and, I mean, what's, what's the status on that, because he's getting paid, it's been seven months. We're, we're, I mean, we're, we're paying this guy salary, you guys are as well, I mean, should we not have, you know, I mean, that's something you definitely should look into. But, I mean, we're paying this guy salary just to sit at home. Who would not want that job? I mean, that being said, that's all I got. But, I mean, this, this thing, the kids, I, I take that personally, I really, really do, because, I, I should do. But, but that's something that, that, I mean, that's, should be addressed, I mean, as a community, because we've got troubles here, I mean, as it is. We don't need other, I mean, people from New York coming in, especially when they're not licensed, this lady's a social worker, she doesn't have a PhD, she's not licensed, and right now, there's a woman that has not seen her kids in over a year. It started out as a ninety-eight, and all of a sudden, I'm sorry, that's all, thanks.
Thank you very much. Do we have anyone else to sit down tonight?
There's no one else on the list.
All right, thank you all for coming. All right, that concludes the area that is open to the public, and we do have an executive session planned, so we will need to have a motion for that.
Sure. First to, to, I revise, code one twenty-one dot two-two, chief, subsection four, I move to enter executive session to discuss negotiations or bargaining sessions with employees concerning their compensation in terms of conditions of their employment.
No motion, by Lierman, to move into executive session, may we have roll call, please?
Lierman?
Yes.
Osborne?
Yes.
Evelyn?
Yes.
Perkey?
Yes.
McKay?
Yes.
Snar?
Yes.
Okay, we are now in executive session, I would ask those that are not involved in that. Thank you all for coming.